I call this meeting of the Fargo School Board to order. First item on our agenda is approval of the presented agenda. Yep, second?
Second.
All those in favor of the agenda as presented, please vote by saying yes. Any opposed, no. Next item is recognition of the audience. There was a sign up sheet that was posted out by the front agendas. Nobody has signed up to address the board tonight, but in case you weren't aware of that, was there anybody who would like to address the board this evening? Okay, thank you. Onto staff reports. David Markort, FEA.
Hello. We're continuing with our membership drive for September, and we'll be wrapping up here in the next week or so, but it's ongoing all year, of course, but our big drive is right now. We'll be offering Issues in Education this year, which is a one-credit class for members to take. A couple of topics are the Common Core, Evaluations and Personnel Files, Retirement and Investments, and the first session is October 9th. And the North Dakota United Conference is set for those two days off in October. It's how to use assessment to inform classroom instruction, and there'll be a keynote speaker on Thursday, and then breakout sessions on Thursday afternoon and Friday. That'll end.
Thank you, David. Next report is on our activities report. Would you like to make introductions?
Yes, I can. Dr. Gross is unable to be here tonight, so you get me for these three reports, so I'll be doing the introductions. So our first report tonight is from the Activities Department. We have Todd Olson here, and so I'm going to introduce Todd and let him get up and do his report, and he'll introduce other people that he has, anybody else he has with him, so.
Okay, thank you. President Nelson and members of the board, I'm here to share some of the details in our student activity program, and to answer any questions that you have. To start out with, I'd like to introduce Denise Odegaard. Denise is our Performing Arts Specialist, and she's been a great resource for me in this position. As you see by the data that Ann Marie forwarded to you, our participation numbers remain very strong in our district. We have a very high percentage of involvement in our activities program. A couple of things I'll highlight from this past year. This year, as I said last year at this time, was the first year that our coaches were required to have a coaching permit. We had over 260 coaches that earned permits this year. The permit, to fulfill the requirements for the permit, our coaches had to be CPR, AED certified, take a first aid course, take the fundamentals of coaching course from the National Federation, and take a concussion course, which is part of state law, too, that we're required to provide concussion information to our coaches on a biannual basis. Some other highlights, we continue to work very closely with Brock's department. Joy Rederath has been a great resource for us, as we try to ensure that we're using our resources in the best manner possible. Some highlights for this year. We are the first community ever that is going to try and host the state wrestling tournament, followed by the state hockey tournament, followed by the state boys and girls basketball tournament in a four-weekend span, so we're already gearing up for that in our department. We're going to take a look at our compensation for our activities programs for our employees. I'm really excited about, we're going to do a book study first with our activity coordinators, and then take it into the buildings with our coaches on the book Inside Out Coaching by Joe Arum. If you've followed the scandals recently in the NFL, Joe Arum is getting a lot of airtime right now because of his cultural-based approach to how coaches should train kids and how our activities should be conducted. His big push, I guess you would say, is to define the goals of being in a sport versus the purpose for having sports, and how we need to place more emphasis on the why we have activities in our schools, beyond do you win a state championship every year? So I think it's a good place for our coaches to start having those discussions. The last thing I'd like to highlight a little bit, and I'm no longer on the North Dakota High School Activities Board, Andy took my position, and Dr. Birch is also on that board, but they're taking a look at the academic requirements for participation in both our athletic and our fine arts activities. Currently, the state requires our students to pass 20 hours to be eligible for those activities. We in the Fargo schools require 25 hours or five classes in a week. They're looking at going from the hourly model to progress towards graduation, is I believe the three words that are in the policy right now. So something that we're going to have to work on this year, if that passes in January, is how do we define progress towards graduation in the Fargo Public Schools? So that'll be an interesting discussion going forward. I'll take any questions you have for me.
Todd, go ahead, Linda.
So it looks like we really do have strong participation in activities, which is great, and it seems to be fairly steady. What would you say that you've noticed over these four years that you're showing? You have to make kind of extraordinary efforts to encourage kids? Is this just kind of natural? Kids are kind of driven to participate? Or, you know, how would you kind of put those numbers in context for us?
I think kids are very much attracted to high-quality programming, and I think we offer high-quality programming, and that attracts kids, you know? You'll see occasionally a jump, if you look through the four years, where maybe a different instructor started a club, or an instructor left us, and that club doesn't have as high a participation. But I think by and large, if you offer kids good things, they want to be a part of it.
I'll speak to that, and then I'll go to David. Of course, I pay close attention to my son's school at Fargo North, and what jumped out for me were the DECA numbers and the Junior Classical League, and I think recruiting, I mean, those instructors really do push their programs, and it's a positive experience, as you said, but that makes a big difference, too, for those numbers. My question, though, would be, what's now required by the state? Is the coaching training required by the state, or just the concussion management training?
The coaching permit is required by the High School Activities Association for all coaches in grades nine through 12.
Okay. And then the concussion model, is that a legislative rule?
The concussion law is in century code.
Okay.
It's a state law that we have to provide that training. We have to provide the information to our parents and our athletes annually. We have to provide training to our people biannually.
Okay, thank you. David?
Todd, in looking at the middle school participation numbers compared to Carl Ben and Discovery, there seems to be a fairly steady decline almost across the board at Ben. I see boys' numbers are down significantly. The girls' numbers are holding more steadily than the boys', but do you have any idea what's going on there?
I don't, other than our student numbers are down, but that wouldn't translate to a percentage decrease. I think Peggy and Dean probably track that a little closer at Discovery and at CBE. They go beyond the, we have a season summary report. They go beyond that and tie it to the individual student, so that might be part of it.
Dr. Schatz would like to address that question, too.
Well, I think there is a correlation with the number of students that we have at Ben Franklin. We have the lowest number of students at Ben Franklin we've had for a long time. And so, as that population has declined, obviously, you're not going to have as many kids that are out for activities and doing the different types. So if you're looking for a correlation, that would be my first guess.
So from 2000, with 139 kids in 2010 and down to 79 in 2013, it hasn't been that big a drop in enrollment, though, has it?
No, and I can't explain, you know, that much of a jump, but I mean, if there's a general trend of going down, that would be a natural correlation. Why in basketball? I don't know. I mean, that would be a question for Todd or the administrators over at Ben Franklin.
From personal experience, I know clubs play into that, too.
Yes, absolutely. There are a lot of things kids do that aren't our programs, too, that are very valuable experiences. They just aren't sponsored by the school district.
Becca?
What is the percent that we are looking to get as far as student participation at our schools?
I think in the initial strategic plan, the goal was 90%, which is a very, very lofty goal. It really is. I don't believe that our private schools in our community have achieved that.
One other, which is linked to the middle school participation, and then looking at the high school participation. It seems like Ben Franklin and Discovery, comparison to, say, Ben Franklin to North, Discovery to Davies, the percents stay fairly similar, but the difference in participation from Carl Ben, with a 70 to, say, 85% participation to South, being 60 to 70. Do you have any idea what would be going on there?
I don't, no.
Todd?
Madam President, Todd, I'm just curious. As I look at this, a question that has been in my mind for a few years now is, especially the at-risk population who are at our Woodrow School, and I've heard anecdotally that those kids aren't as interested in activities and aren't as likely to play sports and do those drama and stuff. But on the other hand, we all know, too, that the more activities kids are in, the less trouble they're in, I understand, and the more likely are they are to graduate. And then we also know those are our highest dropout rates. So how do we, and then, as I'm seeing this, they're only in the yearbook and the psychology club if they're active at all, as I read this for Woodrow. But how, and going forward, what I want to know is, is this community model, community school model of activities, of activity, of kids active, is that acceptable? Or is it comparable to other, as far as benchmarks, to other schools? And/or is it what we're satisfied with going forward? Or, because I just look at this, and I think we should have more of those Woodrow kids in school, in activities, but I'm naive about that.
Well, and there may very well be some more that are in activities, but for athletic participation, they go back to their school of residence. If you can be a student at Woodrow, and if you live in the Fargo South attendance area, that's where you would play your sports.
But that's not back in Woodrow's numbers, then?
No, it hasn't been. It's tracked to where the contract for the activity is issued. I know this year, the group that they had was philanthropy and youth, and I visited with their instructors, and they had 12 kids who were interested, so they offered the program. I believe there was a turnover in staffing, and yearbook kind of has gone away a little bit.
So going forward, do you see any, I'm just looking for education personally. Is there anything we're changing or modifying, or any new focus and emphasis going forward with those Woodrow students and activities?
You know, we haven't talked about that. I can certainly visit with David Berkman about that and see if, I will tell you, he spent a fairly small percentage of what he could have spent on his activities from the budget this year. To me, that probably says it was interest-driven.
I've got David and Linda, but I want to clarify. So the Woodrow students have the same opportunity to participate in their school sports, is what you're saying. It's just not provided at Woodrow? Okay.
They have the opportunity, if they meet the eligibility requirements, to play any sport they want at their school of residence.
Or club.
Yep.
David and Linda?
If I may respond to John. John, I'm not that familiar with Woodrow's program, but I'm quite, I was, I'm quite familiar with Community High in West Fargo, and their students, almost to a person, have jobs. Many of them, when I was there, are holding, are having, are working up to 40 hours. So I think in a lot of cases, those kids have chosen jobs over after-school activities, and they just don't have time for both, and they're looking for the monetary value. That was the experience there was at Community.
Thank you. Linda?
Thank you. Looking at the clubs, that's kind of fascinating, that different schools have different clubs that are unique to them. So is that a result of a teacher that might have a certain passion and say, hey, I'll give this a go and see if we get interest? So are students deciding they want a particular thing? Is that what accounts for some of the unique offerings at the different schools?
I think it's a combination of the two. I think you have those teachers who have that strong interest to draw kids in, and then occasionally, we have a group of kids who want to form a club. They go out and find an advisor and start down the process of getting their club approved. So it goes both directions.
Paul?
Thanks, Robin. Todd, I know that you have a lot of responsibilities, a lot of different things to cover, so what I'm going to suggest here, I don't mean to add one more thing onto the concept here, but, you know, when I look at the numbers and I see things like the Junior Classical League, you know, it just has outrageous numbers, and most of us may or may not be familiar with why that, or some of us may not even be familiar with what that organization is, but it's certainly driven by an instructor or two with a great deal of interest and excitement and passion for the area. So my suggestion would be, that I think would be appropriate for our district activities coordinator, is if you could come back to us with a report, but most importantly, create an action plan for finding a way to get more kids involved in all types of activities. And I mean, that's maybe a little bit unfair to say, whoa, let's see if you can make that happen. I just mean, you know, typically, the year comes up, and people have their activities that they're going to be involved in, and whoever shows up, you know, shows up, and I think it would be, and then we have classes on how to avoid concussions, and how to do CPR, and how to do all this. I think it would be great if we had some way, from a district viewpoint, of helping those instructors and staff members promote their areas and expand participation, so that next year, when we look at numbers, we could, we could find that we have a greater, we have a real big increase in the participation, because for those, you know, anybody who's gone through high school or middle school, and that would pretty much be all of us, we all know that being involved in those kinds of activities is a huge predictor of your success and happiness in school. And so it seems right and appropriate that we should try to not just host those activities, but we should find ways to encourage those activities to grow and prosper. So that's my suggestion to you, is if you could find some way to foster those activities to grow and prosper, whether it's football, basketball, or art club, or you name it. Find some concrete ways to promote those and foster their growth, and it would be great to get a report back on what's happening along that. And I don't mean to add one more thing to your plate, but, you know, it would appear as if we'd all enjoy coming back next year and saying, oh, wow, look at the participation levels are way up. So that's my story. Stick into it.
I have a question for Denise. One thing that stood out for me, and I'm paying a little bit more attention to music and orchestra and things like that these days. Carl Ben and South High have a very high number of choir participants, but not so much those with instruments. Is that a socioeconomic issue, or is that a recruiting result?
I think the number that's going through Carl Ben and South is due to the teachers at Lewis and Clark.
Okay.
I know their choir program doubled, I think doubled last year, the fifth-grade choir.
Interesting, okay.
And we're seeing every year, there's a few more kids in the instrumental, or it stays even, and so I don't think it's more socioeconomic at all.
So with the instruments, are those, I know that we rented instruments for my children. Are there scholarship programs for those?
Yep, we waive the fee for students who can't afford to rent instruments, and we've actually purchased more instruments every year, and typically, instruments we don't purchase, because there's becoming a bigger and bigger need every year. Like the smaller instruments, we usually had people rent them, and now we're seeing the need, so we're starting to buy those smaller instruments, too.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands. Is there? Oh.
Thanks, Robin. Denise, did I hear you say that, which one of the elementary schools was it, where we've seen a big burst in the, a big growth in the vocal?
Lewis and Clark.
You know, that's a neat thing, and that's kind of exactly what I was getting at, is that there's probably a teacher or two down there who's gangbusters about their program, and it makes a huge impact, and it works its way all the way through the district, until we get up to the upper levels, when we have increased participation in those areas. And if we believe that increased participation is a precursor to better high school career and experience, then, boy, I think that's great, and I would love to have them come and show up at a board meeting and tell us a little bit about what they're doing, and bring some of their people down, and sing some songs, and we'd pay attention to them and let them know that we're aware of the fact that they're doing a good job.
I'll bring them in in March, when we have Music in Our Schools Month.
March? That's so long for now.
Hey. I don't see other hands. Thank you. We all know that activities often happen outside the school day, but they contribute to the well-roundedness of our students, certainly, so.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks. All right.
Okay, our next report comes from our high school principals. Mr. Dolan is going to lead off with the group and introduce the other two principals, and they're here to talk to you about their senior high exit surveys.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. As you can see, we've developed a PowerPoint that will kind of guide our discussion here this evening, and at any time, just feel free to interrupt me. But before I begin, I would just like to tell you that North High opened its doors for the 50th time this past fall, and that's pretty cool when you start to take a look at that. In 1965, when we opened, there was about 960 students, and this past fall here, we're just a little bit over 930. In 1965, it was three grades, grades 10 through 12, and today, it's, of course, 9 through 12. South High opened just a couple of years later. You might recall that there was a Central High School burned down back in 1966, and also the dome collapsed, on our Spartan Dome, in 1966. So for a year and a half, students from Central High School and North High shared the facility. So during that time, we had all those students going through there, and it's still a great place, as we will continue for the next 50 years. Our history club is a very active club at North High School, and Colin Kloster, who was just recently selected as the North Dakota History Teacher of the Year, put together part of our museum this past year, and it's got a lot of artifacts from its 50 years of existence. And so I'm just going to pass around the publication that they put together, and at the end of all this, I'd like this to go to Paul Myers, because he was there in 1965. So we'll just pass that around. I was not a student, that is false. But again, in the class of 2014, past spring, we surveyed all of our students, and so we had a fairly good representation of respondents. We have summarized them into three different areas, a post-high school plans, academic results, and school climate and culture. This first slide that we're looking at here is what are your plans after graduation? It's a pretty interesting screen, as you take a look at it, and the high percentage of students who are intending to go to four-year colleges. Over 80% of our students are planning on going to a four-year institution, and still, 13% of our kids are planning on going to a vocational or technical school, and 3%, obviously, to the military service, and another 3%, 3.5% off to work. But it's a fairly significant population that is going off to post-secondary education. Where do you plan on going? You'll notice I've got a little bit of historical data in here now, just a couple of years. We've been doing this presentation now for the second year, and you'll notice that in-state or out-of-state comparison, and the red bar is last year, previous year in 2012, and, excuse me, 2013, and this past year, 2014. And so just slightly more kids are staying in-state. And is that contributed to the academic scholarship that students can earn? Possibly. You'll note that the state of North Dakota allows kids to earn up to a $6,000 scholarship based on ACT results, good GPA, involvement in different academic programs and so forth, but that's maybe one of the reasons why. Probably more study needs to be happening there. This screen is where will you be attending college? And so I took our local institutions, and I've changed one of the headers from your document that you received, but the second bar there with 32 students, that's MSUM. I didn't want that to be confused with M State, so Minnesota State, University of Moorhead. And you'll notice that the gold bar there, where NDSU is, has significantly increased over the time that I've been here. It never used to be almost four times as what used to go to UND, at least at North High School. And so that's increased significantly. I think the presence of NDSU in our community has just risen, you know, with their move to Division One, and the notoriety that they get, so I think possibly that's part of the answer there. The other thing that I thought was interesting in this graph here was University of Minnesota, of 20 students going off to U of M, more than even actually Concordia College, which I thought was interesting. I wouldn't have guessed that hadn't been around here for a while. Any questions on that screen? Oh, one other comment is just, as you take a look at NDSCS, that's North Dakota State School of Science in Wapperton, and also M State, 45 kids are going there, and that's probably up to, as we've looked over historical time, more kids are going off and getting that post-secondary's two-year degree at one of those types of institutions. I believe I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Todd Birch here, principal at South High.
Thank you, Mr. Dolan, and congratulations on 50 years of Spartan pride. So we're at 48 right now, so in a couple more years, we'll be able to celebrate that half-century mark as well, too. The next slide in your packet is breaking down the percentage of kids that are planning on working. In the previous slide that Mr. Dolan showed, I believe there's about 3.5% that are going to work. As you can see, the majority of those who are planning on working are staying in the state of, excuse me, in the city of Fargo, 60.5. Your packet might say 65.0, so you may want to correct that, but it is 60.5. If you add those that are staying in North Dakota, we're looking at close to about 73% of our graduates in the Fargo area staying within North Dakota to go to work. The counselors assist me with educational and career planning. As you can see, first of all, with the results from 2013 to 2014, has stayed pretty consistent among those that agree, no opinion and disagree. Certainly, those that have agreed would be able to take part in many of the resources that the counselors do currently provide. Starting at eighth grade, before the students actually enter into high schools, there is an opportunity for the counselors to meet with parents, to talk about the course offerings as they transition into the high school. So that's really the first opportunity, that the concept of credits having to be in minimum classes, and looking at the graduation requirements are somewhat rolled out to them in an official format. At the high school levels, we have counselors that work with a, excuse me, a population of students broken down by alpha. So in other words, at South High, we have four alpha populations, and those counselors work with that student for the four consecutive years. So we don't have a population working just with ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade. This creates an opportunity to develop the relationships, getting to know the family, perhaps getting to know siblings, and also throughout the course of the four years, getting to know the students that much better. In ninth grade, freshman orientation, once they have their classes and they finally receive their schedule. At South High, we, to start the school year, we have individual conferences with the families and the students. At North and Davies, they do a little different presentation, but nonetheless, it is an introduction now that the courses are given and a schedule, and what that looks like in terms of day one of school. Also, at the ninth grade level, they're introduced into a software package called Are You Ready N D, and that presents a little bit more of the career education, planning, interests, personality inventory-type things that is used consistently then throughout the next three years. Another highlight at the ninth grade level is a career expo that's being held at the Fargo Dome. Normally, that's held in December, and this has to do more with the career and vocational opportunities, very well supported by our local community colleges, as well as a number of businesses. So if you have an opportunity, I encourage you to take part in that. It is a regional opportunity. Our students have about hour, hour and a half to be on the floor, to do different things with running cranes, sitting in big trucks, aviation, all kinds of fun things, running backhoes, software for those kind of things. So it's really a unique opportunity for the ninth grade students. In the 10th grade year, then, counselors work with students, working on their interest inventory. Also, we look at job interview skills, and at Davies, they look at doing more parent conferences with students and counselors. In the 11th grade year, once again, the Are You Ready format is used, and there's a component called Do What You Are, and this is a personality inventory that matches to the career choice. Again, Are You Ready North Dakota has anywhere from career clusters, and then from that career cluster, it breaks down into more specific job possibilities, and at that point, then, there is an opportunity to be able to meet with counselors during their spring registration, to be able to match those interests, along with course selection, and also career planning, or post-secondary planning, that the counselors are very involved with. Then at 12th grade, of course, each of the high schools conduct a parent-senior conference that's that starts in September, and at that point, credit counts are checked, and career plans are discussed at that time, making sure that the resources are in place, and any support that is needed to be able to talk about colleges, talk about programming, support, and financial aid, all those conversations have begun. So those are just some of the highlights. One other highlight that we certainly do on the career side of things is that every other year at each of our high schools, we have a career day. This is a fantastic opportunity. Our students sign up for three careers that they want to attend. Usually, there's over 100 career choices, and this would not be possible without the support of the career, the community members that are very willing to come and provide their time to our students, and it's been a fantastic opportunity for our students. And lastly, of course, our counselors are very instrumental in working with students on a one-on-one basis. They're very approachable for a number of reasons, both for academic, personal-type reasons, and we're very beneficial, very lucky, I should say, and benefiting from having counselors who are very willing to work with kids and have had longevity in each of our high schools to be able to create those relationships. So quite a bit of information on that one. The next slide has to do with quality instruction and the core areas of reading, writing, and mathematics. And again, I think the interesting piece with this has to do what I would consider to be looking at it, again, from a longevity point of view. The scores that we see here in the agree column, I think somewhat parallel some of the standardized results that we may see in NDSA testing or ACT results, for those that are, at this point, meeting some of those core expectations. And it gives us a little bit of opportunity to take a look and see that, for those that disagree, certainly, having the opportunity to find out exactly what they disagree with would be the next question, logical question, to be able to follow up with them, so we might be able to address some of those concerns. Moving on to teachers utilizing technology for instruction. Thank you very much for providing the resources and also the support for students in grades nine through 12, all now to have a personal learning device. We didn't realize the impact not having ninth graders with tablets last year did, but this year now, that that's just a common expectation. One of the things that it has done is it has given teachers another tool. It hasn't replaced the teacher. It has complemented the teacher with respect to what they can do in the classroom. As you know, we have a focus here now in Fargo schools dealing with project-based learning, where we certainly want the engagement of the students to demonstrate their learning, posing more open-ended questions and allowing the student to be able to take the learning where it could and should go, and to demonstrate that, not only in terms of paper, electronic paper for that matter, but also in terms of presentation and having to deal with areas that would demonstrate their learning. Other pieces that certainly are focuses that correspond with this slide as well, too, would be the emphasis of the four Cs. They share with 21st century skills is a huge emphasis as well, too, and anytime that we have the ability to engage kids with collaboration, creative thinking, communication, and I'm forgetting the last one right now. Creativity, thank you, would be an example of which we have the technology. And as you can see here from this slide, that 70.5% of our students have been pleased with the technology. At South High School, we started with grade 10 as a pilot program, so the last two years, certainly, North and, excuse me, Davies and South have had the computers, but we've had them now for almost three years at South High School, and we feel as though that's just part of who we are now and how we conduct business in the classroom. So that's what I can share with you with respect to my slides. To take you the rest of the way, Mr. Troy Cody from Davies.
Good evening. It's my privilege and honor to finalize our presentation. Feel a little insignificant, because this is only our fourth year in existence, Davies High School. Again, starting my third year as building principal, and five years prior to that, I was under Andy's tutelage at North High, and he's taught me from day one that there is something to be said about competition. So given the opportunity, I've got to boast and toot our horn, Davies High School is the highest ACT composite score for the second straight year for all juniors testing, and wanted to throw that plug in there for our teaching and our staff, as well to the board members that were looking forward to your visits into our building late this fall and into the early winter months. It was just a wonderful opportunity to get you into our buildings last year, and we're looking so forward to that coming up here. So I will be talking a little bit about the last five slides here. I think we've summarized it in kind of, the culture and the climate is kind of the opportunity that we're going to address here. This one, I think Todd was yours, but I'll just let you kind of take a little bit with that. That's the academic integrity piece. There's the results with that. Anything you had prepared for that?
Just again, it shows from the 2013-2014 similarity between the responses. As you can see, they're focusing on the disagrees, that we have students that primarily understand the importance of being honest, not having plagiarism or cheating being a part of their experience within our high schools, and also advocating that our teachers are doing a wonderful job of holding kids accountable for the learning that they have. And once again, now, when we go to projects through project-based learning, in which we require the students to demonstrate their learning, certainly, then, that becomes more difficult for the students to be able to, should we say, share work. What we can say, though, is that there's more collaborative efforts that are working together, which certainly then provide more brains, working on a common opportunity to be able to produce results. So, sorry about that.
My first slide is talking about teachers caring about them, was the question. Very similar responses to the results last year. I think this is critical to draw correlation to Todd's presentation earlier. One of the ideas that I thought, as I looked at this slide and as I compare that to our district activities data, this is consistent, just a tad bit lower on this one as it relates to agree with the number of students involved in extracurricular activities. I think Paul hit it right on the head, that I think there's a clear correlation, that when we get students involved in activities, they'll respond more favorably to questions as it is in this particular slide as well. And then there's always that middle bunch, too, that really, at the end of the day, they just really have no opinion on the matter. So I would probably draw a little bit more of a reference to those that selected disagree, and so trying to find a correlation with relation to those that answered that. This is also very consistent with all three of our schools. Building relationships with students is a focus that I've been stressing very strongly at Davies High School. We've stressed and built a model around building relationships with one student at a time. And I know at North High, over the last two years, Andy and his team have been working on relationships where they've used the motto, "Every student needs a champion." And then I know very clearly, at South High, they also believe that a strong foundation in a relationship with a student is needed before you can carry on and continue their strive for excellence. And so I think there's a clear correlation that there's a culture and a climate in our schools that students are feeling cared about. The second slide talks a little bit about students at my school feel safe each day, and there's a two-year comparison there. I think it's encouraging that you'll see a slight increase in students' perspective as they perceive their safety in school. A hypothetical thinking on my part, but I've got to say that this may be attributed to the most recent placing an emphasis on the hiring of our security folks, no longer being consulted and contracted out, those are now FPS employees. And I would say that there's a strong correlation as they take some ownership in our building, and that they also are connecting with kids in a more personal and a real matter. And if you've entered into our buildings, these are the individuals that greet you with a smile and ask you, you know, "What are you in our building for, and how can I direct you in the right area and direction?" So there's a slight increase in that as well. The next slide, I think-
Excuse me, Madam President. Is, I don't interpret that quite the same, but I'm wanting to clarify that a bit. Are you talking physical safety? The way my head goes is, the kids feel safer, like they're not picked on as much, or they're not at risk, and they have more protections and bullying policies. But you kind of went the direction of security officers at the front door.
I think, John, an inference that you made reference to could very well. I can't suggest how they answered that question. I think it's all in how, you know, at the end of the day, what is safety to me? My immediate reaction went to the safety inside of it as it relates to wherever kids take their mind to, but it very well, could very well be. I know there's been an emphasis as it relates to the education of our students and how they respond to some of that bullying and the policies that have been put in place, and the adults that they can talk to. I think it's fair, and I think a point that I can hit on yours is this very next slide here, John, where we talk, and it asks, how, excuse me, I jumped over one here. This is my next slide that I was going to talk to. This is very encouraging, as you look at it from a school board perspective, as well as a building principal. This is, this slide speaks for itself. How awesome is it to hear that nearly 90% of our students in our seniors that responded to this survey felt that they made a positive connection with two or more adults in the building? This would include our kitchen staff. I think this also includes our coaches that are extracurricular, our support staff, and our teachers as well. So in terms of the safety piece, I think that would be an encouraging point, that they're making a connection to folks, and maybe they do feel safe.
And if I might, Madam President, this is the best news in this report, in my opinion, is this jump in students' sense of safety. And I know when this discussion surfaced a few years ago, there were other contexts like physical safety and armed guards and security entrances and pathways and all those things, and school shootings, but I looked at it, I was more into the personal sense of safety. And I think administration staff should be just commended to have that big a jump, whatever it is, in our students feeling that safe in our school environments. That's just a really big accomplishment.
And just bringing in just a final couple comments on this, too. I think there's great value in this, because from a teacher to a custodian, to a cook, to a coach, they all have value and bring something to the table. And the fact that we might struggle with a student, getting them connected at school, we talked earlier a little bit about clubs and activities. I think there's always a way that we can administratively encourage the adults in our building, that if we can get kids to feel safe, that they can feel cared about, that there's a sense of belonging. Just this, most recently, Sunday, if you listen to NPR, they talked about how music, and this kid was playing the cello and was feeling, "I've never belonged to anything else like this music group." And his mother couldn't get him out of bed for anything other than, "I'm not going to let you play your cello." The kid got out of bed and headed to school. And so there's really, there's something for everything, and this is really data that I think speaks to every adult in our building from, every job is important along the way. So that's something that is encouraging and stuck out with me as well. This one also, I think, is encouraging, and we talked a little bit, and David mentioned this as it relates to those that are working outside of the school. This slide represents some of the external factors that we deal with in school today. This is a reality, that nearly 63% of the seniors that responded to this survey work at least one hour a week outside of the school day. I think that's something that's a little more troubling, nearly 20%. One in every five senior that answered this survey is working 20 or more hours. If we do the math with a typical eight-hour day, that means that our students end their day at 4:00, maybe gives them an hour to get to their job, and then work from 5:00 to 10:00. And then that means at 10:00, they're coming home, maybe getting something to eat. And then, if we do the math right, there's at least an hour or two of homework every night. Being a father of four and seeing how their lives operate, sometimes, my own children don't work, but I know they're involved in activities, and oftentimes, I'm getting ready for bed and brushing my teeth, and unfortunately, sometimes, they're just getting ready to do their homework, and that's a reality. So I think this slide is really, speaks to the external factors that we, as a school, are often dealing with and struggling with, as we work with and partner with families as it relates to what's really important, is the homework versus the paycheck. And sometimes, that's a difficult battle to win in the education realm. My final slide then talks about this, similar to Todd's slide, as he spoke to the school offering a high-quality total educational programming. It speaks to the overall programming that seniors believe they received. I think oftentimes, when these surveys are given, the responder answers questions mainly from maybe their most recent experience, and this was given in the spring of their senior year. Maybe they just found out that they had to take a senior test exemption, didn't quite go through, or whatever. But I think I would focus more on the disagree than adding the two pieces together. I think it indicates that only over 90% of the students did not disagree with their educational programming. And I think at this time, all three of us would be available for questions, if you have any.
I want to open with one question. So was every senior required to take this exit survey?
Required, no.
Okay, because I noticed on slide 13, Troy, that how many hours do you work? There's 250, so I'm assuming that's the number of students.
I believe in this survey, if the number served us right, there was 555 respondents, or roughly 600.
Okay.
I know my specific data, I shared it, I had 267 respond to the survey out of, in terms of my responses, and so they were combined together.
Did they have the option of filling it out, or were they required?
It was given in their senior English classrooms. Maybe some of the students were not there that day or something to that degree.
Okay, thank you. Paul?
My question, and I'm going to apologize in advance, because I think it moves a little bit out of this total arena, but since I have all three principals there, it's kind of nice to be able to ask the question. And it also goes back to the activities and extracurricular things that we have, and students being involved. Couple of years ago, the district purchased a fair amount of television and filmmaking equipment and things like that, and I'm just wondering, and I realize it's a little bit out of this area, but it kind of deals with activities and with involvement. Are the three schools using that equipment now? Is there much going on in that area, or is that waiting for the right class to come along, or what's the story on that one?
I'm not aware of it, actually. I don't know, is it at South?
Pretty much.
Equipment that we've got. We offer the class. Unfortunately, we haven't had the turnout that we hoped for with respect to the number of students that have taken that class. I'm not quite sure why that is in some respects. There could be the, again, connecting it to an individual who has perhaps done a good job, although students have taken it but have not reached out to either market or sell it as potentially as it could be. As an elective offering, I think it's up against a whole lot of other elective choices as well, too. So therefore, depending upon interests that students have, as well as the availability of room on their schedule, all those factors play into the point. Those individuals that certainly have taken the class have benefited a great deal. They have walked away with the editing, video editing capabilities that are phenomenal, because we do have what I would consider to be access and exposure to some professional equipment and software that the students would be able to utilize, either on a personal or a continuing education basis.
So if the class is not being offered now, that equipment is still there and not necessarily being used right now, but it's available going forward in the future?
No, the class, we do offer it at South High School. We do have that. It's just not the number of students that we had hoped to be able to attract to that hasn't followed what I would consider to be probably the investment at this point.
And I think is South the only school that it has been offered at in the past? Okay. Thank you.
Jim?
Yeah, I have kind of a, I guess, a digger-deeping kind of question. On a number of the slides where, and I think everybody noted it in their presentations, the concern is always on those that strongly disagreed. Is there the capacity in this survey for them to actually, you know, give us the reasons for their disagreement, or is it simply checkbox one, box two, or box three? And so I'm curious if we're trying to at least get from them their anecdotal reason for their answer.
Yes, there are some additional questions that do talk about what are some areas for improvements, what are the things that you do like, but it's written text, and it doesn't really lend itself to a graph-type presentation, but there- doesn't really lend itself to a graph type presentation. But there are lots of comments that administrators look at and, you know, one of the things that I've noticed during the course of time is that kids don't feel that right to, or feel that they can make any decisions. They're not a part of that decision-making process, you know? So individually at my school, I've been doing some things differently in terms of trying to get some input from kids and to make them feel a part of the decision. But I also know how to, I feel like, how to run a building. And so I feel pretty good about where we're at. But I, I think kids in that category would feel like they're, they're not a part of that decision-making process. But there is a lot of, a lot of text, uh, answers.
John?
Madam President, principals, uh, thank you for coming and sharing this information. Dr. Schatz, uh, one of the thoughts that occurs to me, like Jim drilling a little bit deeper, would be to, and maybe you already do this at your administrative levels, is, is a comparison of the comprehensive schools so that we're not just looking at the aggregate or, or, or the, you know, the composite results for the district, but that at least at our administrative levels, I'm assuming this, but you're looking for flags in each of your arenas that if one school's not on par with the other schools, it'll get your attention. So I'm just, uh, raising that. I'm assuming that information is further down by, by school. The other thought is, is I'm wondering one more time, sounding like Johnny One Note here, but I'd like to know what the Woodrow Wilson school students think. And they're graduating students in their exit surveys. And I know it's a different group. But there's an awful lot to learn from kids who, who, who are faced with challenges and still go forward. And, and I'm, I'm, I've, I know when we did our engagements, I just learned a lot from the Woodrow students. And maybe they're surveyed too and it's just not in here, but I would suggest that we look at the comparative schools. At least you do it administratively and also survey the Woodrow students.
Real quickly, uh, as it relates to your first question, absolutely 100%. We get our own school data. Um, I dis segregated that. We met with our administrative team over the summer. I share that with the results. Um, we speak very candidly about some of the students' responses, Jim, as it relates to yours. Um, and it's a text response at the very end. They're able to kind of, you know, dump their laundry, so to speak. But I think as it relates to your specific question, what we can do, and I'll work with this moving forward, is as it relates to a specific question, and when they click disagree, we can put it and require them to put a text, um, as it relates to, um, "You chose disagree. Could you share a reason or two?" So I think there's a little bit more that we can zero in on that. Um, and then the second part to John's, uh, question is, I believe, um, Dr. Gross and David Berkman spoke about that they were going to, uh, provide you with some, uh, alternative programming at a later date and at a different meeting. You'll be getting this, the data that, uh, Woodrow students did take that as well too. Yeah.
Any other question? David?
Madam President and principals, I thank you for this. And I looked at the, the first pie chart you had here with the number going to college and vocational school. And, I mean, I think in North Dakota, we've always prided ourselves on the fact that we have a very high percentage that at least start out. I think that the part that concerns me is the 3.6% that are going to enter the workforce. And, uh, and I would assume that probably quite a few of those may be among our dropout population too. You know, I know many, uh, of my friends have kids that have started in, at NDSU or other colleges. And because of dual credit courses, they, their kids have started off as sophomores. I've always wondered why schools don't pursue kind of a dual credit option for the kids that are more financially motivated than scholastically. And has any thought ever been given to credit for working outside of school? I, I think it's, I can't stress how important it is to keep the kids there till graduation because we might, at least some of the kids that drop out, might find a different avenue open to them than they, than they end up at. Is that something that's possible or is it, is it, uh, I know we're not going to graduate 100%, but if we could cut it down to 2% or, or whatever the chronic dropout rate is going to be set at?
Your answer is, we do offer dual credit classes and you'll see a significant increase in the last three years. We're in agreement with NDSCS. And so a number of our students are getting dual credit in different courses like medical terminology or Cisco or AP Biology or Anatomy and Physiology, a lot of different courses across the curriculum. Um, and we also offer the AP curriculum. And so students can earn some college credit if they get a score of three or better on an exam. That scores from a one to a five. And so over my tenure, I've kind of kept track over the last 20 years. Uh, we've seen a steady increase in the number of students taking AP courses and also dual credit courses. And, and, uh, so I, I think that's real positive that we've seen that. Uh, you had another question there about, um, yeah, the work experience programs that we have. We have a number of work experience programs. So kids can earn some credits for going out into the workforce. There's a limit. I believe the limit is one credit, one full credit. And so, um, we do have a number of students that earn that, but they normally have to also be involved in like a, a business education class, uh, or those types of courses that would lend itself to that work environment.
Well, you're already doing it, so I applaud you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the principal team or administration? Thank you, gentlemen, for spending your evening with us. We'll see you soon. Uh, we're in an hour, so let's take a 10-minute break. We'll reconvene at 6:40.
We'll call this meeting back to order. Dr. Schatz, would you like to introduce our next presenter?
Sure, we'll continue on with our reports. Last time that we met as a board, you received information about the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, and so you've had time to look at that. The idea was for you to take a look, and if you had questions today, we would address that. But I want to introduce Ron Schneider, and I'm going to have Ron do just a little bit of an introduction here for you. Ron is over at Woodrow Wilson, he's our counselor there, but more than that, he's also our community liaison with a number of different organizations that tie into services for students, in particular in the area of at-riskness. And so I'm going to have Ron talk to you a little bit about what he does and how he interacts with the community, and also a little bit about how the data from a survey like this is used in the realm of work that he does and the counselors and with the community groups that he works with. So, Ron Schneider from Woodrow Wilson.
Okay, thank you. John, I'm going to go after two of your questions earlier that I can answer. How many kids from Woodrow- Wildrow participate in activities at other school? Last year, seven. Basketball, dance, cheerleading, wrestling. I know seven. How many kids take the senior survey? All of them. It's how you get to walk out the door. So, you finish your last class, you go to the library, and you do the survey, and then you can leave. So, yeah. So, who am I, what do I do? A lot of the things that Dr. Schatz indicated, that I work with a lot of the agencies that are affiliated with providing helpful services to our students over the years. One of the first things that was on the contract when I signed it said I would network with a number of agencies and helpful groups for our skids, our kids. So, I spend a lot of time visiting with those groups, working with those groups. Currently significantly involved in two of them, one of them being Youth Works, who you all know very well. I serve with them on their board right now. And a second one that I'm actively involved, very actively involved with and have been for a number of years, is the Rape and Abuse Crisis Center. And I encourage you to all to come to our fall fling because as the president of that board, we need to raise money. So, you need to come and help sponsor, support us. So, I'm pretty involved in a number of things that our kids are involved in. So, there's my public service announcement for the day. The other things that, how does our data get used? Our data is used extensively. You know, we ask the kids to sit down on some late March, early April day, and every kid in second hour on this day is going to take the survey. And it takes them anywhere from 35 to 45 minutes to finish it. It's a completely anonymous survey. They finish it, it goes in an envelope, that envelope goes into another envelope, goes into a big box, and it's gone. We have no way of knowing who completed which survey, and we tell the kids that, and therefore it is my feeling and it's very honestly answered. There's no reason to lie because there's no way for us to know who you are. The survey does throw out data if a kid says, "I smoke 40 joints a day, I drink every day, I'm using methamphetamine every day." The odds are, that's not true, you're not in school. Okay? So, those surveys get thrown out, and there's a very, very small number of those. But our results go to a number of places within house. Connie Nelson, our grant writer, uses them for a number of our grants. The Carol White program is one of them. Some grants that we've got with DMF, and then I think the list is long, a very long list of grants that she uses the data in. A number of the agencies within the community, I have to put my glasses on, last time I presented here, I didn't need glasses, so. The Children's Services Coordinating Committee is one of the groups that uses our survey rates. The Rape and Abuse Crisis Center, Youth Works, Fargo-Cas Public Health, they put out an annual report. If you read it pretty close, most of it is tied back to the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. The Social Services, Cas County Social Services, Prairie St. John's uses it, PATH, the foster care people, they use it. And then NDSU. And NDSU uses it for a lot of their research, and then of course, it's the ultimate dissertation tool, as Dr. Schatz.
Boys and Girls Club and the Youth Commission uses it as well.
Absolutely.
It's a very credible survey.
Yep. It is a very credible survey. The survey is administered by the state, but it starts at the Center for Disease Control. So, it's got a very admirable start. Agencies use it, like Drake will ask for it, Solutions will ask for it, a number of those groups will use it too. So, we have a number of groups that use it for a lot of things. Also in-house, one of the groups that uses it is the Health Study Committee. They review it on a, every other year basis when it comes out, and there are adjustments made to curriculum all the time based on the results of the survey. So, if we're seeing a trend in one way or another, we make curriculum adjustments based on the trend that we're seeing for local kids. So, those are the primary uses of that survey. Questions for me?
So, the idea was if you had questions about the survey, we would be more than happy to answer those for you. So, at this time, if you have questions, I'll let you, Robyn, call on people if they do.
I was waiting.
Well, I'm, Ron, Madam President, members of the board, Ron, I'm really delighted, I didn't know this survey was so widely shared, and that it had so much import by those other entities. I, because that's gratifying to get that information, that feedback. I didn't know who had it, or where it was, or whatever. The thing that I look at in here, and maybe you can guide us, one of the committees had a discussion not long ago, was what can a school district do in a community setting to make life safer and healthier when we have information that indicates that there are some risks, people at risk? And knowing we have partners, and yet knowing the information, and yet knowing we're only the school district, we're not the community or the village. I'm curious, and we've talked about maybe having our, one of our committees take this and partner more, but I'm just curious your advice and thoughts, what can a community do with this to leverage healthier change?
One of the things with a behavior risk survey like this one, it tells you a lot about what the kids are doing or not doing, and one of the things it identifies is obviously the activities that are negative that they're involved in. It also identifies a lot of the positive things they're involved in. I think one of the greatest ways to impact something like this is quite frankly, make as many connections and relationship building things as possible. Now, whether we do that within our classrooms, we do that in our extracurricular activities, or we use all of the other entities that are out there, the Boys and Girls Clubs, Boy Scouts, Girls, you name it, whatever group is out there, we make connections with them, and they're making connections with kids, and all of us are kind of in the same place. The more connections, the more relationships, the less need to do stuff we don't want them to do. You know, I really believe that. I really positively believe that the greater impact we can have on kids is the more people that are connected to them, and however that works and however they get connected doesn't really matter, it's just that they have those connections.
And I can take it one step further for you, if you want to hear it. It's my topic. It's social capital. It's taking information like this and really looking at, how do you engage students in your community? And so when you look at data like this, a lot of times, it's a reflection of your community. So, if you see that you have a high preponderance of alcohol abuse and use in a community, and we know we have that in our adult community, you may see the same trends in our youth. And so then, there's a point to start working from. What do you need to do about that? Cigarette use, if you look in the survey, you'll see a definite decline over the last three years. Well, that's because there's been such a proactive process put in place by a lot of different agencies to get young people to understand you shouldn't smoke. So, there's a great example of where you see success stories. When I did my dissertation, and I used this data for my dissertation to look at, what is it that you, what is it that you need to do for students who involve themselves in multiple at-risk behaviors? Because if a student involves themselves in one at-risk behavior, that may just be adolescence. You know, you're testing the waters, you're out involved learning and those types of things, but what we get concerned about is multiple at-risk behavior, when you engage in one or more of the types of categories that you see in the survey. And when you look at that, and you, and we studied, what is their engagement within their community, looking at levels of social capital, low or high? Typically, students who had multiple at-risk behaviors had low levels of social capital, low levels of connectedness within their, within their community, their school, their home, whatever it might be. So, when I took over superintendent, one of the first things we did was, we put in place a very proactive build-your-school culture process. And so every one of our principals, when they were talking about tonight, connectedness, building the culture in your school, every school is working on their school culture and school climate. So, that's a direct result in, how do we make sure that we provide the social capital for those kids who don't have it? That connectedness within a school, within a community, whatever it might be. So, that's a direct correlation from what we know and what we can do to try and prove what's happening. And so, and I think we're making great strides in that. But it will never be perfect, but it's getting better, as you saw tonight, and when you listen to our principals talk, if you go out in our schools, you see all sorts of things about culture and climate and those types of things. Putting policies in place to make sure that we're addressing things like bullying, all those types of things. It's all part of the big picture. But if you don't proactively work with that, it's not going to happen. So, that's what we're doing. And so, information like this then provides us the opportunity to take a look. Are the trends reflective of our community? If so, then what is it we can do as partners within our community to help? And like Ron said, working with all the different agencies he works with, they're all trying to do something, and everybody's involved, so. As they say, the data is what it is, and so then it is, what are you going to do about it? That's the bottom line.
Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Schatz, I think that, today I was with somebody in my office, and it was a mom who has a kid, a student in Fargo South, and I was just kind of anecdotally mentioning some of these topics that would, like how many kids have seen a dentist or doctor, or had milk, or have adults, and she was like, and then there's good news, there's really good news in there too, like how early on, the seventh and eighth graders, how many of them are sexually active, or are doing it with protection and education and so on. So, that, I just have this sense that our community, the more our community can learn about our people, and its families, and it's everybody, the more we can get a sense of their challenges and their realities, the more we can not have our heads in the sand about what they're trying to work through, because it's a village again. And so, what should a school district do with this information?
Broadcast your board meeting. I think the more we can get it out, the better. The ways we can get it out, the information we can provide, we can be putting it in newsletters for schools, we can present it to parents in a variety of ways, but the more information we can get out to parents, the better off we are.
And doing what we're doing. I mean, we are proactively trying to do some things in reaction too, so. But like you keep saying, and what I've said is that it's a partnership, because we can't do it all. We have students for six to eight hours a day typically. All the rest of the time, they're in other places. And so, there has to be other things going on too, just besides what we do.
I can address a little bit about how I, as a board member, use some of this data. We know that smaller learning communities foster more relationship building and bonding with an adult within the academic environment, or anywhere else for that matter. So, when we approved Davies as a school board, part of the basis of that, and discovery with how it was built, was the smaller learning communities and the pod-type styles, so there are smaller learning teams. Also, with the expansion of Davies, the extracurricular activity availability shot, you know, it doubled from south, and so we had that many more students, more than double, we were surprised, who went out for sports because they had a better chance to make the team, or tried out for the play because they had a better chance to make the lead. So, that's how I, as a board member, have used some of this data, and it kind of goes back down to those relationship buildings, that everything goes back to it for me in that sense. David?
Madam President, Dr. Schatz, Ron, the skeptic in me has to ask, how valid do you think these truly are? I've seen this survey many, many times, and I've also heard kids talking in the hallways after taking the surveys, and, you know, asking each other, how did you answer, you know, that question and whatever? And any of us who have had adolescents and teens know that, you know, sometimes they'll do any, they'll do or say anything to see how high they can make our blood pressure go. Do you, do we take these numbers at their face value, or do we just use them to say that there are problems out there?
We take them at face value. There's a three-year less percent error on the survey. A number of years ago, we did a similar survey, and we asked the students, "How often have you used the drug, or have you ever used the drug Alwana?" We made the word up, it isn't the word, it isn't the drug, and none of them used it. So, that was kind of my lesson, that we can give out a big survey, and generally speaking, we get very accurate results. You know, and even if consistently, there's a 10% error in it, it's, the trend that is still to me, helpful information, but I don't really believe that there's that kind of error in this survey.
I think that's pretty indicative, when you look at the cigarette aspect of it, cigarette use. You see it going way, way down. I mean, and that's significant, and you can correlate that directly to the efforts going into the no-smoking campaign. So, even if you do have some students that maybe aren't truthful in the survey, I would put pretty good stock in the survey overall. And it's widely regarded, and the CDC is behind it, so I mean, they've got a lot of things involved with making sure that the credibility of the survey is pretty good. But you can't, you can't always say that the survey is the end game. I mean, you've got to look at other anecdotal types of data and information. So, we know that if you walk into a school and talk to the counseling department, ask the counselors, what do you think some of the major issues are with the students that you're dealing with? They could probably tell you, you could probably go back to the survey, and you'd say, you know what, there's a correlation there. So, you know, I think that you just have to make sure that you're triangulating the data, if you will, looking for other pieces and parts to fit with it to see if there's a correlation, and I think that we do that, and I think, so I think that what we see here is probably pretty indicative of what's out there.
Rebecca?
A question, some of the questions are, have information from, say, 2009, but nothing from 11 or 13. Is it that, I'm just guessing those questions weren't asked, or maybe it was phrased in a different way in, say, 11 or 13? They're obviously all very important still.
The survey questions change rather frequently within this thing. They'll switch a couple words and all-you-can comparison, or they'll compare, won't compare them anymore, or they literally will take a question out. There's a lot more questions related to physical well-being in there than there used to be before.
And so what we did was, Stephen Rowe went and took the three years of data, and he put this together. This is, the state doesn't break it out like this. So, now we have a model where in the future, we can take, when the survey in next two years, year and a half is done, we can take that data, put it into this model, now we'll have four years. And you may see that gap, you might all of a sudden see a question that's asked with only data for that year, and the rest of the years now are sitting back, because they changed the question. So, but we try to bundle it so that they're close to each other, so you can see, you probably noticed that. So, we'll just continue to track it that way, and when the gaps appear, just know that that was a different question.
Go ahead.
And I think we've, haven't we instructed the Governance Committee to take this up, or, I don't believe we're just accepting the data and not looking at it any further. Am I right on that, that we're trying to figure out a way to explore this and make some plans in terms of how to network farther into the community?
Yes, the discussion happened as to which committee would be most suited, most well-suited to handle this and the community partnerships, and there's a lot going on already, obviously, but the committee's very much recognized it's just much bigger than the schools. And so, looking for ideas on how to branch out in a more formal process with some of those community groups. Yes, you're spot on.
Okay, I see no further questions, so thank you, Ron.
Yeah, any time.
Other reports? Dr. Schatz, you want to start us off?
Sure, it's a night of reports for everybody. We, in a strategic planning arena, we continue to move forward. I keep giving you weekly updates on that, so you know exactly where we're at. We closed our survey that we were doing on Friday, we're in the process of putting that information together and looking at it, and looking at ways that we can bundle that for our use. The ad hoc committee that is going to look at that information and come up with questions that we would use in a public forum meets this Thursday, and once we have done that, I'll be reporting back to you at the next board meeting with all of that information, so that we can move forward with the planning of the public forum that we want to have moving down the road here. So, right now, we're just in that gathering stage of all that information. The response to the survey was pretty good. I would say we were anywhere from 10 to 15% in each one of the community and parent groups. For the students, it's higher because we have that direct access to students, but I think the sample of surveys that we did gives us a pretty good representative sample to work with. And the biggest reason for doing the survey, I want to remind you of this, was not so much to do a survey and then write a strategic plan, it was to do a survey so that if we do a public forum, the questions that we ask at the public forum, which will only be about four or five, have some basis for the reasons for the questions, rather than just saying, "Well, how do you think we're doing as a district?" Well, if under standard one and advanced ed model, we see something in there, and that's what the committee will be working on, they're going to draft a question under that standard that might address something we saw there, so we can get a better question with maybe a broader discussion. So, you're going to see all that, it's just a matter, we got to get that put together. Okay? So, that's where we're at with that process. The only other report that I have for you is, I have correspondence, so I got really excited about this. Two things, actually. One, good, and one, just kind of giving you some feedback. The one on the feedback is from the staff at Jefferson, and they wanted to let you know how they feel about boundary lines and things like that, so I thought I would share that with you. So, I'm going to hand that around. The other one is, it's really nice, with all the things that go on and all the complexities that we deal with, we don't hear a lot of good things sometimes. But Betsy Beaton, she works up in our main office with Anne Marie, and she is the front line for calls when people have questions, and where to get answers, and those types of things. A gentleman took the time to write to us about Betsy, and how helpful she has been the two times he has called, and is, you know, calling it, what great customer service. Interestingly is that last year, when we reorganized a lot of our district office, we actually did sessions with the village on customer service for the district office. Now, I'm not saying that's what caused Betsy to give good customer service, because she's always done that, she's kind of quietly, just does her job every day, but it was really nice to get that, and so I'm going to share that with you too. So, I'm going to send one this way, one this way, and they can make their way around. That's my reports.
Dr. Agri? Deletes.
Nothing, thank you.
Campbell?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Right, done with board reports, we're on to the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to accept that.
I would entertain a motion to accept that.
Accept the consent agenda as written.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions about the consent agenda? See no hands? All those in favor, please vote by saying yes. Any opposed? No. Consent agenda is approved. Business section of the meeting, GPs four, five, nine, and 10. Thank you to the board members that got a chance to fill that out. Fairly self-explanatory, there was one suggestion by Linda, which would, that's on page five, talking about the wording in GP 10, 1.5, be changed to avoid surprises. So she recommended that that goes to the Governance Committee. So if we can add that to the Governance Committee, that would be, that would be appropriate. Any other feedback on this moniton report?
A move of adoption, or acceptance, rather, of G.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other comments? Because I do have one. Kind of like the polls that were sent out before in the student surveys, as board members, it's kind of our obligation to any time we say something's not in compliance to explain why. So I noticed that there was one where we had on occasion departed from its commitment. So this is your friendly reminder to put the reason why. And just so you know, in full disclosure, those comments are listed by board member name. So this is a tool for us to be better, and so we want, we want to take that feedback very seriously. Any other feedback on the GPs? Okay. There's a motion on the floor to accept them as presented. All those in favor, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Thank you. On to board reports, committee liaison and correspondence reports. Can't remember what side we started on, so we'll start with Jim this time.
Thank you, Robyn. First of all, for those of you on planning, and for those of you that aren't, October 3rd at 7:30 a.m., I assume upstairs in the depot room, we'll have our next planning committee meeting. And it looks like it'll be a fairly full agenda of topics based upon what Mary Ann visited with me today on. Tomorrow night, the SEC Governing Board will be meeting out in Castleton. I don't know anything too dramatic on their agenda, but I'll certainly report back at our next board meeting. The North Dakota State School Board Association Board of Directors did adopt, or excuse me, the State GAC Committee did adopt another resolution regarding possible changes to TFFR, possible increased funding by the state to TFFR, probably five different potential solutions that might help relieve districts and our employees of the incredible contribution levels that we're being forced to put in right now to make up for the shortfall in the fund. That will go to our general assembly meeting, which will be taking action, I believe, on Friday during the state conference. And I think that's it.
Thank you, Jim, John. Okay, Rebecca?
Other than attending the ice cream social at Clara, well, Clara Barton Hawthorne, but it was at Hawthorne, I don't have anything, but it was a fun night.
Jennifer?
Fun, and yours was the most popular ice cream, wasn't it? So other than attending the ice cream social at Hawthorne, the Health Insurance Committee met last week. And basically, for me, it was my first meeting, so I was gathering a lot of information. They reviewed, well, first everyone went through introductions for the new members. They reviewed some of their plan changes. And we kind of discussed plan differences in the future between high deductible plan offerings and HSA plans. The consultant was, or joined us via teleconference, so we were able to ask some good questions. The committee is going to be working on an education plan for staff and employees moving forward, how to roll it out.
Thank you, Jennifer. David?
I think we finally have a time for our negotiations meeting. When, Linda's not here. When was that? October, was it 3rd? 31st?
October 31st.
Anything else, David?
Other than that, I don't think so.
Paul?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Dinah?
Well, I was at my second ice cream social at Clara Barton, this year as liaison, and it was lots of fun. Also, the Communications Committee has not met and will not meet in October unless something comes up. I also attended the Board of Health meeting last week. Two things. One, as Rebecca and John both mentioned, at Governance, there was discussion when we were talking about the Youth Risk Survey and partners. And I was talking to Ruth and Ron basically said, of course, that the Board of Health already uses the Youth Risk, Youth Survey to drive some of their programming. And to Dr. Schatz's point, the smoking, they do a lot of smoking things, and they really do take advantage of that information to drive their programming. But they also indicated that should we have interest in partnering in some specific area or having some specific conversation about something, that they'd be open to discussions as well. So depending on how things happen. And another piece that I think is really relevant to us, they have just hired a new employee entitled a full-time refugee health coordinator based in Fargo. At this point, it's a one-year commitment. They're hoping the funding will continue. But the role of this individual is to deal with all refugees that come in and their health care and follow up with them to make sure that they have proper health care physicals when they come, analysis, and if they have issues, that they're properly referred and treated and so on. And as a school district, certainly if we have healthy students and families, then they do better in school. So this is a really good thing. So I told the board that I would tell you that if you're having conversation with legislators going forward, that, you know, this tie to good schools, so if it ever comes up or there is an appropriate time to mention it, I think we help each other by supporting things that are important. So I think that's something that we can talk about with our legislators. Thank you.
Thank you. I handed around the president's report, so we'll run down that quickly. Looks like every board member is going to be at the state convention. Of course, three of us are required to be there by state law the first day. So thank you for getting back to ours, to Ann Marie on that. Date has been chosen for the City Parks and Schools joint meeting. That's listed there. And we are, Ann Marie is seeking RSVPs. Notice I put RSVPs in bold. Fake me later, Ann Marie. Okay. There are two board members left to respond on the national convention. And it looks like, with the exception of one board member who hasn't had a chance to respond yet, the winter board retreat common date would be January 16th. So more to come on that. Friday in your inbox will be your next section of ELs, and it looks like the finance ones are up, Brock. Okay? So Brock will be in the hot seat. So plan some time to get those done by October 9th. As far as my individual reports, I have my south date scheduled, October 13th. I got to sit through a very enjoyable interview with our state auditors. Let's see here. Assembled and met with a pre-K group as GAC directed me to when I, that's the last year. So I put a report together and sent that off to our current GAC Chair, John. In addition to that, I have been invited by the United Way to discuss their pre-K legislative reports as well. And that meeting's tomorrow at noon, and that'll be a couple hours. So a lot of, that's going to be the buzzword, I think, this year is pre-K funding at the state legislature. It's pretty pervasive throughout our, at least our community. Next governance meeting is Tuesday, October 7th at 7:30. And I put a picture of four smiling faces scooping ice cream at Hawthorne. And Rebecca did have the favorite flavor, but it was called Superman. Since four women were serving it, we called it Superwoman. And it was very popular. So we had a ball. It was fun. And the community members really appreciate seeing the board members out too. So thank you for those of you that joined us. John?
You know, we could give our media a real scoop on that.
Oh! Do that before it melts. Oh, boy. Our expert in puns over there. Okay, any other reports? Our, oh, well, oh, the birthday report.
Madam President, yes, we have a big week coming up and a big month. We, Ann Marie is September 27th. Her birthday is right around the corner. So this weekend, when we're all, when you're off and basking in the sun, you know we're thinking of you and our best to you. And then, of course, Paul Myers is October 13th birthday, right before our next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. With that, we will, our next meeting date is October 14th. So any debriefing items for the evening? I see no hands. So this, I'll declare this meeting of the Fargo School Board adjourned. Thank you.[1791.61][1791.61]